It is 6:30 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the non-public minutes of October 28, 2020.
The motion to approve the meeting.
Thank you Tammy.
That's accurate.
And second from Joe. Any corrections? Tammy?
Yes.
Here are local grammatologists.
Okay. On page two, under the principles we support, the third to last line, it says the distance learners cause an additional burden on normal duties. I just don't like that any learner should cause a burden on anything. Can we just take those sentences out? Mark, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it. I don't recall the complete statement what like to that though, but I'm okay with that.
You were talking about 25 new students with 20 students distance learning?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And the distance learners cause an additional burden on normal duties?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I get what you're saying, I just...
Yeah.
You might have to take it out.
I think it might have also been partially in reference to, we did have a discussion, I think, last week about the new position for the distance learning coordination. It might have had some...
Absolutely.
Which is how it sounds.
Which, you know, five years from now, somebody will read here, be like, oh nice. You know what I mean? We get it because we're in it, but somebody a few years from now reading the minutes cannot. So, I'd like to strike that. Does anybody disagree?
No.
On page five, the bottom paragraph, Mr. Shiderwans, is just a couple of typos. Second line, last word, it should say recommended, not recommend. And then, one, two, three, fourth line down, it should say many noted that, not many noted stated. Do you see it? One line down? And that's all I have.
Thank you Tammy, anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of approving with those changes and corrections? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Objections? And that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the non-public minutes of October 28, 2020.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Brian.
Second.
Thank you Tammy.
Any reason for discussion or...
Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Objections? And that motion carries. Educational focus, welcome Georgia. Georgia is here to speak to us about the partner program and give us an update on what they've begun.
Okay.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, I can't even tell you how much I need to be back to work. Seriously, it's wonderful. So, I should have done, I did a PowerPoint, but I really didn't do it in accurate form. I hate PowerPoints. They're just, everybody could have turned their chairs and read along, and so I just printed them because I said, that's really nothing we need to do. I've got one. Yep. So, what I've got is a handout with just 11 slides, which kind of explains the program. That's the first thing that you're getting. The second thing you're getting is just a notes, and I don't want you, it's going to say notes for the presentation, don't flip over to the backside. Everybody be a good student, and don't look at the back, okay? That's for the end.
All right.
All right?
We'll try.
Flashbacks. Don't turn them around. Don't turn them around.
You're insinuating I was a good student.
Board members, is that it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. And then, the piece de resistance is, this is the last thing, next is the last thing we're going to talk about. I don't know how many of you really have, I know everybody preaches that residential placements and day placements are very expensive. And they are very expensive. What I did was I got onto the website, the DOE website, because I know how to do it because I'm one of the, I'm the special ed director for the Enriched Learning Center in Berlin as well. These are the prices for the private daycare, the private day programs and residential placements. So we'll talk about those in a little bit. But I must tell you that this partner program, I've done, I've done this job for 20 years, and I have never seen anything like this. And I can honestly say that. I've worked in districts where they tried to build programs from the ground up, that just, you can't do it, building from the ground up when you don't know what you're doing. And when I first came on last year, I was very excited that there was a program. I said, how wonderful is that? And then, once I got to really see how things worked in the program, and Angela Joke, the teacher, is amazing, the pairs are amazing, and the, for the two years that this program, this is the third year, for the two years, things have just gotten to a point in the school where it's perfect for these kids. It's a perfect situation. And it's a perfect situation for all the kids, because everyone, no one is afraid, no one is hurt, no one... So if you just, real quickly, we're going to walk through the PowerPoint, which is just that the New England Center for Children has partnered with a number of schools in New England, not in New Hampshire too much, I think it's mostly Massachusetts, Rhode Island. The pamphlet I gave you, this is a copy of the three-piece pamphlet, that gives you the stats, really, about New England. But I wanted you just to know that the important thing, in my mind, is on the very first, the page two, very first slide, keeps the students in their community schools. That is invaluable, absolutely invaluable. And if the students, if you had students who are out of district, in the age range of the program we have, you could bring them back, because what out of districts are doing for much, much more money is what we're getting. So, the program as it stands right now, we can put children in it from kindergarten up through fifth grade, and we have, we have a sixth grader who are transitioning eventually out of the program, but he's still getting support. So the history was that many of the students who were in this program were not able to participate with their peers in classrooms and recess, and there was just too many things that were, that were happening. It opened in 2000, August of 2018 with five students. We now currently have six students. Well, we have five, we're getting another one in, and we have the one in sixth, in sixth grade. But the thing that I really want you to note, and this is where it says notes for the presentation, the student inclusion data, so this graph shows you in green, in blue, the amount of time that the students, the average minutes that they spent in the regular classroom, the first, the year before the program came in, and then, school year 2019, was the increase of the inclusion, with the exception of the first student, which is slightly below. The second student was way above, the third student was above, second, the fourth and the fifth. Those students were able to be with their peers in the regular classroom because they were supported, which is great. The next slide is, it's a flip. So what on this you want to see, is you want to see that red to be lower, because this is the behavior reduction data, and this is the specific behavior of non-compliance that was graphed. The first year, 2018, that was the number, what they started with, and 2019, this is what they're ending with. And as you can see, with one of those students, basically, pretty much gone, non-compliance is gone. And those are just, I'm just going to make them much smaller, but when I said, well, you guys need to see this, and very big bold letters. The other thing that's really important for you to know, and this is on your notes, it's on the notes page, for the additional information, that's slide four that I just talked about, this is really important, and I think it's really speaks to how well things happen in that, in that partner program. In 2017, 18, before the program began, there were 17 workman's comp slash physical incidents reported against staff, 17, mostly due to assaults by students, biting, kicking, hitting, slapping, so on and so forth. The first year of the partner program, there were seven, and last year there were none. Now granted, we ended the year in March, but the partner program still did extensive work with the students remotely. And that's really important for you to know that. So the other thing that I really wanted everyone to see was down at the bottom, I have a definition written out for ABA, because that's what they do. They use applied, they use applied behavioral analysis to really chart what's going on with the kids, do the data, and decide what they're going to be doing. And not everybody knows what that means. I mean, we throw the word around, applied behavioral analysis. I gave you the definition, and the definition is this, that a socially significant behavior is targeted, such as a child learning to make a request, instead of hitting someone because they want something. Then an environmental alteration is introduced, such as teaching instructions and tangible reward that's highly preferred by the child. Then the change in the targeted behavior is objectively measured over time. And that's what ABA is. It's not saying a prayer that's going to work, it's not saying, oh, well, we didn't do this, and we didn't do that, and we can try this, and let's try that. It's purposeful, it's sequential, and it's intense. And I just want you to know that honestly, I am so amazed at this program. I've never seen anything like it, and I've been doing this for 20 years. So you can kind of go through this at your leisure, because it just gives you information about how they do things and what they do. What I do want to point out to you, the paperwork about the cost of out of district placements, and I've done this again for years, I mean, I can pretty much tell you right off, right off the bat what it costs. The thing I want you to look at is on the back page, Spaulding Youth Center, the second line down, neurobehavioral and autistic program, day program, which they just started a couple of years ago. The annual cost of that, for that, is $105,000 per child. Then you have to get them there, because that's tilde, so your transportation cost. When you take two of our kids, and the cost of their two pairs and transportation, that equals the amount that you are, we are putting out for this program in our school, which is $300,000. This is a deal. This is a deal. Just two of those kids, and we've got seven, and we have more that are probably coming, who knows? So I would encourage you, absolutely, to continue the program. It's amazing, and it is, it's a testament to Lincoln and Muster that you were willing to take this and run with it. We've had Littleton Profile and Woodsville calling us up last year saying, can we come see this, because we really want to do this? And I had to laugh because a couple of, just a few days ago, I got a request from the special ed director in Woodsville. What she wanted was to come visit again, because they're going to make their own program.
Sorry.
And I said, good luck, because it's not, you just can't do that. You just can't do that. Number one, you don't have, we don't have to worry about hiring the teacher, and our teacher is a certified master's level special educator, who's also a board certified behavior analyst, who has 20 years' experience doing it. We didn't have to go look for her. NECC gave her to us. So that's a really important thing. So the money is an interesting thing for school board members to know, because I know we bring it up every year. We say, you know what? One kid will empty your trust fund. One kid. So, questions about that? And I'm going to let you flip over your notes.
I can't wait.
I know. I know. Okay. Flip over your notes.
Oh, we can do that?
You can do that.
Do I have questions first?
Oh, okay, questions first.
I do have a question. You said 300,000, is that, is that the total cost that we pay the NECC and then our pairs?
The NECC, the aides, is just about 300 and a quarter.
Was that? That's not...
The NECC is 185 plus a pair.
Right.
Plus a pair.
Plus a pair. So you have seven pairs. So it's 185, and then the cost of seven pairs. So I'm guessing it's probably around 325, maybe, and that's two kids.
Day trip and out of district.
So, question 30?
I just have a comment. I mean, it's clearly, they're doing an amazing job, and the staff and the pairs, and I'm glad we made this decision three years ago. I think there was a lot of conversation, and a lot of you guys were on board. You know, it was, it's not easy to get support, build support for that kind of investment, but clearly, there's been a huge return. How are the kids that were in the program assimilated back into the program this fall after having the experience of remote?
Well, interestingly, so what we did with remote was they did, they got intense remote services from the, from the pairs and the teachers, approximately three to four hours a day while they were remote. They assimilated and back in just fine, just fine. We had no kids that struggled coming back in. So, no incidents, not, and, you know, those are great.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it is amazing. And the relationships are a big piece of it.
Yeah.
The one, the one really good thing that they do, which I like, is that one person isn't with one child all day long. They mix them up. So each child may have two, always has two, sometimes has three different people during the day, but it's always the seven, the seven people. And it's, and it's regular. So one student may have this one and that one, another student, the next day will have that one in the morning, this one in the afternoon, and they do the flipping. So the kids don't get burned out, the pairs don't get burnt out, which is a huge, huge piece. The other piece that can be problematic is pairs become pairs, become moms and dads, if you let them be.
Right.
For all day long, every single day.
Yeah.
They no longer are an instructional person or remediation person, they're a mom, and they're a dad. And you know how that works when you do remote learning. Moms and dads are, that's not what we want to do.
Sounds so true. I was embarrassed.
Yeah.
One-on-one with the same student.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a good thing.
Answering each other's sentences.
Yeah.
Oh yeah. Oh no, this can't continue.
It's not a good thing. Yeah. It's not a good thing.
You know, I think in the, the reduction in incidence to zero is incredible, but I think the fact that these, these students are able to spend more time in the classroom with all of their peers in a healthy situation, it's not only a benefit for them, but it's a benefit for their other classmates as well, with the reduction, you know, disruptions and challenges, and so it's, this is great.
Yeah. So on that page, I went to the teachers, yesterday, and I said exactly this, can you tell me how you feel about the partner program being integrated into our school? These are the exact words that people said. "I really like it, it gives the students what they need, a total immersion in individualized and group socially appropriate development, teaching them exactly what to do. Excellent consistency. We don't have to wait for a physical removal to take place when an extreme behavioral reaction is anticipated, because it happened before. The intervention takes place long before that situation arises, or the situation doesn't arise at all. The teacher and all the paraprofessionals are highly trained and meet the students where they are." So they don't, they don't say, okay, well, we, we think you're here. They know where they are. There's a lot of data, a lot of observation that goes on before we even bring a kid into the program. We know what they're doing. "The partner program does the things that are needed by the students the right way and a safe way," which I thought was really cool. "The partner program teaches the students to manage their behaviors. The behaviors are not constantly spilling into the lives of other students in the same school setting." And the best one of all, this one was great, "We're at the sweet spot with this program being in our school," which we really are. From a parent, this is exactly what she said, "Amazing, fantastic, life-changing, life-saving, supportive and appropriately challenging, collaborative, and the communication is fantastic." So, and I didn't even have a chance to think about it. I went to them, and I said, can you tell me what you think? And they asked like this. I couldn't write fast enough, so, and I can write pretty fast. So, those are all, that's all the stuff.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just have a question, because the part of the reason why I asked administration about the partner program a couple weeks ago, and even was, I know we're coming up on our third year, and when we first...
This is it.
Yes. So, and the third year, when we started this program, it was sort of pitched as a three-year program and with, and sort of an anticipated transition into sort of doing it ourselves, but my question was sort of was, where are we with that? Have we decided that that's the appropriate thing to do, or not appropriate? Are they willing to stay on if we want them to? Are the teachers that we have here, like...
Absolutely.
I guess, what's the plan going forward?
The plan going forward is, to me, what I think you should do is you need to keep them as long as you need them. You've got to remember too, which this year was the first year that we had to do this, it's kindergarten through fifth grade, while our first kid went off to sixth grade. And what they did do was say, okay, bye-bye, sixth grade handle it. That we reduced the kids from the sixth, from the kindergarten through the fifth grade, we only have six, we're counting him as a seventh, and they're staying, not in charge, but really...
Supporting.
Really supporting and really teaching what, what the sixth grade needs to do and how to, but he's so much better. I mean, in the three years, it's amazing. So that's, that's where I like to see. Matter of fact, last year, I got in there and I said, look, you know, we have some kids that are in fourth and fifth grade that have been, they should have been in this program, and now we're, how about we take these kids and work on it, work on behaviors before they get, you know, they'll only get a year or two. And that's worked out really well. I mean, Mark and Jimmy can go attest to what we do. I anticipate, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many kids are out there in the community with autism, or that have significant. I would say that if I, if you had to pin me down, that we either keep the program or we take our chances on out of district, there's no, there's no contest to keep the program, just because of the money, the out of district.
It's nice to keep the kids in the community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I guess they're...
Yeah.
Maybe it wasn't particularly, my, my question wasn't necessarily, should we just in the program, it was, you know, the sort of the proposal was pitched as, at that point, we'd be ready to transition to an in-house program of our own, but it, you know, I just sort of wanted to get your opinion and the administration's opinion about whether they thought that that was something realistic, or that's something that you feel like we'd be better off keeping these folks in-house with us, because of the resources that they offer.
Yeah. I think we need to keep these, these people in-house, as they are. This teacher is amazing, the support that she gives all the other teachers is amazing, the support she gets from her supervisor is amazing. There's no way I could do the supervision of this program like it's supervised.
I'm going to agree with you, and just, I know you asked quickly, administration, I'm sorry to interrupt, but being around kids who have a lot of these issues through the year, I've seen, I've seen people try to implement programs, I've seen people try to get training for the program, they just don't get that continual support that we have, and the training that those kids need on a continual basis from, from the adults and from that NECC program. It's, I, I tell everybody that I know in the North Country that you need to look into this, because they are having some really, really severe issues. When I left up there, there's tons of severe issues with the same type of children that we have, and they think the same thing. We can just create our own, they're foolish.
They can't.
Yeah, it's crazy to think that this place, we are so lucky to have that for our kids, because, and what you were talking about too, that transition with those children coming up, and I, I met that child a couple of times last year, and now I have a relationship with the child who moved up this year, and I'll tell you, it's, it's incredible. Yeah, the transformation.
And we can, I mean, I don't know if you, it's kind of like college rolling admission, so you get the kids to a point where they can not have to be in there, you roll them out, and you roll somebody else in, which is the, the way to do it, so...
And so, I mean, for budget purposes, we should just be planning on continuation of what we're doing.
The, I, I, they didn't raise our rates last year. I don't, I've not been told they're going to raise our rates this year. I think we might have, did we put in a little bit? I think we did a 2% raise, just in case, but they haven't said they're going to raise our rates. So, and our pairs are just, we hired pairs and we pay the pairs, so whatever is there, Debbie's gotten into the, gotten into the budget.
Very good.
So, yeah. But I think the other thing also might have been a piece of that, is that they had to, because this was, I think this was their first program in Hampshire, because it's a Massachusetts program, they had to get approval from the Department of Ed Bureau of Special Ed, and that's, the approval process is over a year-long process, and they come in and they, they look at everything. And so they did that for that whole first year, and last year, I got the approval form from the DOE, and the program is approved at our school till 2078. So they liked it.
Pretty good.
That's pretty good. Yeah, yeah, I thought, 58 years? That'd be pretty, that'd be pretty good. I thought it was a typo. I called them up, I said, is this a typo? And they said, no, that's 2078. Okay.
That's not a changes.
I know. So, if you know?
I think what's stuck in Jay's head and my head, originally when Angela proposed this to us, when she first came, it was up in the elementary school, she kind of put it out there that best-case scenario, we, as being her company, works themselves right out of a job.
Yeah.
And the kids get put back in. Realistically, will that happen?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I'm in favor of...
Could the, could the, could the program be downsized perhaps? Yeah. I mean, it's going to be downsized if we don't have the kids, because you won't need the pairs.
But I think that's just how it was originally.
Uh huh. Yeah.
And it was.
Yeah, yeah. And one teacher did say to me yesterday, they said, it's so nice not to hear screaming all day. There's no screaming that goes on. You just don't, you don't hear it. So, I didn't put that on you. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Georgia, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm white now. I used to be brown. That was me. This is real. Feels better.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is correspondence. I don't know, is this the appropriate time to address the Wakefield letter?
Yes.
So every package on the Wakefield School District have reached out looking for sharing SAU central office, I guess, briefs and those types of things. Coverage, I, I don't know, what does it mean that they're exactly going through? Are they just trying to centralize with another district?
I think that's, that's what they're trying to do, and see if how, if any of the districts have enough personnel so that they can share the responsibility.
And take on some of those responsibilities and cover some of those requirements.
Are there also our single-school SAUs?
Wakefield? Yes, Wakefield is a school.
Oh.
No, I think the, the kids, the kids go to, the high school isn't, they don't have their own high school, I don't think, Wakefield.
I think it was Spaulding. No. I can't remember where they go.
Somewhere, I think it's a K-3, something like that. I mean, I don't, I guess, I, you know, from, from my perspective, I don't think it would be something that we would be interested in doing.
Why not?
Because I think we have a part-time superintendent as it is, and I think, I think we are very thin on staff as it is. I don't think we're overly-staffed in our comp department, I don't, I think we're, we run pretty thin. But that's, you know, you know, I mean, we're fortunate to have one person in the counter. But that's, you know, you know, I mean, we're fortunate to have one person in the counter. A lot of school districts would, you know, with budget our size, have more than that. And then having Judy, you know, as a part-time, I don't know that we would want to give any of that away.
Gotcha.
We, we weren't always a single-school district, we sort of shared and it didn't really work out well.
That's why I think we came back to what we're at.
Well, it didn't work out because there was, we were the one school over the mountain with all the other schools that were. So we were the one man out, because didn't get the services that we should have gotten for what we were paying. And we had, were the property-rich district, so we were paying more and receiving less.
So I can communicate that to them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm somebody who feels, feels we should go in a different direction. I just, I, you know, I always remember, I always go back to, it dated now, it was probably eight years ago when the gentleman Paul was here and did an analysis of our SAU and our district. And, you know, and that happened because people thought we had too much and we were too fat and so all these areas. And he came back and said on an administrative level that we were actually too thin. You know, and, you know, our budget is what it is because we are our own district and we are required to have all these things, but that, that we should have more people in our administrative office supporting some of the things we do. We didn't do that, but, you know, I just don't, doesn't seem to impress to me. Who else? Yeah, so I guess, you know, just drop the next response, but I'm just not interested.
Reports, business administration's report.
Yeah. I'm going to stand up, she's going to feel so far away in the corner here. A couple of things. Yeah, a number of you've signed state infrastructure grant reports. They just have to be signed by every board member for each of our projects. And once I got through the audit and tied everything out, those are all set to be signed by every board member. We're currently working on putting together a 21, 22 budget. So the administration has met on all the department budgets. So we're in the process of pulling all that together, and the plan is to have all the binders ready by next Wednesday. So we'll send out email when they're ready. And the first budget meeting is Wednesday, December 2nd. And we had given you the schedule earlier, but it will be in the binder book also. So on Wednesday, on Wednesday, in December, you guys have three meetings. Two are budget meetings and one's a regular board meeting on the three Wednesdays that are available in December. Just wanted to talk a little bit on some of the grants we've been receiving tied to the CARES Act funding. We just, so we had already gone over the CARES Act grant, $69,000 that we received. The other day, we received the supplemental Public School Response Fund, SPSRF, number one, where every school in the state got $200 per student. So we got $54,600 for COVID-related expenses from March 1st to December 30th, not the 31st, December 30th, 2020. And they've been very clear that it has to be spent and in use by December 30th, 2020. So, for instance, we have hired some people this year due to COVID, like our bus monitors. And we're assuming we'll have them after December 30th. So we can expense whatever time that they've actually worked up until December 30th to that SPR, SPSRF number one, and then the rest would come out of our CARES Act yet January 1st to the end of the year. So what we'll be doing is kind of juggling money around, as the state said, and we can use the original care, what we're going to have to do is go back and rewrite our CARES Act grant because they want us to spend this money, they're giving it to us, we just have to spend it. And then we'll move some pieces so we can efficiently use all the money, that's what they want us to do. On Friday, this Friday, the DOE, they're holding another Zoom meeting regarding SPSRF number two monies that we can now apply for. So everyone got the $200 per student, every school in the state. They still have $10 million available for schools over the $200 per pupil that you actually have to apply for. You know, the money was just given to us, we have to apply. So they're going over all that, but the, the catch for that is it has to be spent by December 30th. The application's due December 1st, so there's a really, really tight window. So we're just going to work through that and again, try to use all the monies, COVID-related, as efficiently as possible. So, I mean, it's all good, but it's very, you know, just moving all that stuff around. So we're just working on that, and that is it. Any questions on any of that?
I'm assuming that's out of the $30 million bucket of federal funds that they had still left, so.
Yeah, so.
They're just trying to get it out by December 30th. I'm glad they included education, I mean, that's one of the thoughts I had when I was reading the articles about it.
It's just such a tight window, you know, but it has to be spent.
Yeah.
And in use, you know, we have computers we ordered this summer, we still haven't gotten them in. If they're not in by December 30th, I can't use that money from here, but we can use the CARES Act.
Right. So, did you say that the second round that's going to be announced on Friday is going to have to be spent and in use by December 30th?
Yes, yeah.
But we can sort of backdate the spending that we did over the summer for cleaning stuff?
Yeah, so we can actually go back to March 1st, technically, for any of these expenses. So, yeah, any of like the closets that we operated, any of the cleaning supplies and PPE and stuff like that, we can take out of this bucket of money.
Special money.
Yeah. Any other questions to that? Well, actually, do you, do we anticipate being able to spend some of that money on the distance learning coordinator position? Is that something you can?
Yeah, the project that, well, we're going to talk about that tonight because we're going to nominate or recommend someone. But that hasn't started yet, I mean, it will start like now, so from now until December 30th.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, and the rest I take out of CARES Act.
It's just a, that's a movement game anyway.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, you can just move things to, to free things up or slide things into that hollow.
Right. Believe in tracking it all.
Yeah. Judy, superintendent's report.
Okay, so some of the component areas that I'll speak on can also be going through the agenda and speaking on it when it comes up at the agenda bit. Briefly, you had a budget committee meeting on Monday, November 16th, and Joe will be able to give you more details on that. A policy met today at 3:00, and Joe can give you the details of that. Quite a few policies were reviewed. The facilities committee had met prior, I just want you to understand that the minutes that you have have already been reviewed by Brian at the pre- at the previous meeting. And the wellness committee meeting minutes are also included in the packet. Your letters were sent out to all families in the district notifying them of the extension of the waiver to provide free meals until June 2021. If you remember, the, the original was till December 30th. And, no, that was extended until June, which is great. At the high school, the basketball winch that raises and lowers the basketball hoop needs to be replaced. That was discussed in the budget during the budget process previously. The amount was 4,200. So they're looking at, we're looking at, that was taken off the budget, but it was to be put into the trust fund or used, you know, monies out of the trust fund for that. So that's something that the, that the board would have to act on. And also, on the science wing, we have Ms. Steve's room, your Ms. Parent's room, and the high school library windows. Those are three areas in which the window project is moving forward. They did complete the windows in the middle school wing, and they've been chipping away at that. That's rough. This is American edu-, also the windows would be going into the, monies would be taken out of the trust fund. American Education Week is this week, 16th through the 20th, with many activities and in a lot of, a lot of celebration this week. We did talk about the deputy treasurer, and at the last meeting, and I just put in your packet, the town, both the town and school district deputy directors are, say, a little bit different. But we did actually have a policy on that this evening, so we, so we moved over that policy. The rest I can, I can do as we go through the agenda.
Any questions on any of those items? So we'll schedule the, the budget public hearing for next board meeting?
Yes.
Mark Reston's report.
Hey, good afternoon. I just want to say again, start by saying, you know, how, how well the kids and the staff are doing throughout this time. A lot of anxiousness, right, especially around the holidays, lots of unknown, but kids, again, want to be here. And I'm thankful for that, I'm thankful that our staff is, you know, is nervous as they can be sometimes, but they're here and they're battling it and they, they want to be here as well, I think. So I just want to say thank you to the kids and the staff for doing such a great job. And for all of you for giving us the opportunity to be open. We did meet with our reopening team earlier this week to kind of discuss a couple of logistics that we're looking at, and the result of that was a letter that was sent home, both in the mail, wanted to make sure everybody gets it, so that was sent today, but we also sent it out email and has been posted under COVID tab on the website. And basically that underlines a couple of guidelines, one, use of mask-wearing protocol. If you're not adhering to that, what's going to happen to you, it's kind of like a four-step process. The next thing we kind of outlined is like, we need to really make a decision, let people know like, what is going to happen if indeed there is a case that comes to our school, and thankfully, there hasn't been. What we'll do is, that four-step process too, is basically, one, we're going to communicate to everybody what's going on, you know, that we're going to end up closing. We will close for two to three days to do an extensive deep clean operation at that time. And at that point too, we'll try to do the best we can to get people under the remote schedules that we've put in place. The, the next thing to do is we will notify anybody who has been, well, we'll contact trace and notify those people as well who have been in that proximity and might need to do some isolations. And then finally, we end up communicating again to let people know that we are returning back to school. So we thought those procedures were necessary to communicate, even though, you know, a lot of this kind of understanding, like maybe the public didn't quite know what was going on. So I have already gotten feedback from multiple people as to appreciation for that information from the community, so that was nice to see that they're able to have a plan for themselves as we are. Is it still giffy or is it still, you know, kind of a scary moment potentially? Yeah, yeah, it could be, right? So, so even though we haven't had to go through it, at least we have some guidelines there and I think we can move forward with that and get all the help we can. So that was a pretty productive meeting. The other thing that was kind of vague this past week was the superintendent's principals and athletic directors all got together from the North Country, and we came up with some, some non-negotiables as far as basketball season when we, when we do those things. And we are continuing to go forward with them. The, the first one is kids, well, let's go like this, the all-administration, all-administration superintendent's agencies recommended and chose to have no fans in the stands while we're playing. That also had to do with referees. Referees were not willing to come into a place that had a lot of fans. There was some talk about senior night, perhaps having a couple of people during senior night, but that wasn't finalized. They will also, students will also have to be wearing masks throughout the process. That includes games, which is going to be difficult for kids, but we'll see what happens, right? If they want to play, if that's the case, then so be it. And next thing, the one thing that might affect other teams was that, you know, they're looking at staggering games half hour apart, so therefore, boys, girls games. However, we're looking at our school just to do when there's a home game here with the boys, the girls would go away. So, so we just work at it that way and not have to worry about that half hour for cleaning, ventilation, those kind of things. Another piece was no locker rooms, we're not allowing kids into locker rooms. And they need to be dressed and ready to play when they get there. Obviously, if it's, weather's yucky and they got their jackets on or sweats or something like that and they need to change their shoes, they can change their shoes like in a hallway or something. But those are the things that everybody pretty much agreed on. The other piece that we need to know about is the commitment to play was very similar to what we did for soccer season. The schools up north will not play anybody else below the notch other than us, and we thereby with, with the commitment as well to play only people north of the notch. That will change once playoff season comes. They will meet and gather and talk about that as well, and I think it's going to look a little bit like the soccer playoff season and how that worked, but they could potentially be playing people below the notch in that case. And, and I don't recall if there was any hard decisions on that. There are some issues with those guys traveling, like the buses. WW Berry will not bring kids to a town that has more than 19, 19 active cases. I want to say 19, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they won't bring them with any 19 active cases. Their bus company does not, does not have that stipulation. So we are good to go if we need to travel. When we look at middle school activities, they'll be doing the same thing except for their season will start a little earlier, and I want to say it's starting Monday, it could be this Monday, the next Monday. I'm sorry if I don't have that date exact, but middle school will be starting earlier and finishing up by the time the varsity, the varsity starts. That way we can look at not worrying about space so much as far as practice time and gym time. We could maybe start high school sports a little bit early. When we look at the recreation department, we are going to, we've already, we've already had discussions with them and they're going to be able to play in our gym at the elementary school, the K through five will be playing up there. Same kind of things, no fans, no fans, the restrooms, locker rooms are limited, they don't have locker rooms, but they have one set of restrooms they can go to. Coaches only, weekdays, Monday through Friday. We are allowing for one day for them to do a Saturday at the end of the season to maybe have a tournament or something like that, however they decide. One of the things that played into consideration with that is we have shortened, we have a fewer, sorry about that. Our custodial staff is pretty maxed out. You know, they are, a lot of them are doing part-time hours here, there, everywhere, and so we feel like if the building's been cleaned Friday night and sanitized, why would we jeopardize bringing people in over the weekend to have to re-clean and sanitize all that again? So they will not be doing that up there. Let's see. Also, the idea that passed around during this thing was, the meeting that we had was that a lot of teams wanted to start June, January 19th for games, or even, even preseason, start at that time. But we decided to put the faith in our athletic directors and let them plan and negotiate these obstacles, and we will be starting with the hard times that we had prior to the meeting, which 30th is, November 30th is skills and drills, December 14th, we can start practices, and games will be January 11th, starting according to NHIA, and that's what we would adopt here. Some of those teams might say, nope, we're going to wait a little while, we'll play later in January. The other thing that's being rolled around is two games per week, no more than two games per week. And I don't know if they've committed to that schedule or not, but that was being thrown around. Let's see. Do you want me to talk about the coaches, Judy? Or are we waiting for that? You got it?
I'm going to do that.
Okay. Some of the other things that we got going on, we just, we're wrapping up the testing season. The 11th, the 12th graders, I should say, finished their SATs a while ago. We're kind of getting those scores back and kind of doing some comparative analysis with that. And then we are. And then we are, um, the, when you come out, the SAS testing for the science stuff was wrapped up on Monday. And so I'll be looking at some of that data with our, our science teachers over the next couple of weeks.
Also, student assessments, uh, for the, um, N W E A testing, the grade one, we're still finishing up on that. That will be done by the end of November.
Yeah. Other than, other than that, I think that's, that's all I got.
And with all of the assessments being completed towards the end of November, beginning of December, um, we will then get the reports together and we will be reporting in January like we usually do, um, on all the scores we present to the board.
Any questions? Yeah, Joe.
Mark, you're not concerned about no locker rooms where the kids being soaking wet after the games, not being able to put dry clothes on and it's twenty below zero to jump on the bus?
I'd say a lot of those kids are just throwing their sweats on anyways. If they're just sweating on, and someone might change, but am I concerned? I hadn't really thought about that. Mr. Bossy, I'm telling you, I was like, I mean, you can, you might be.
They don't, they don't change. They throw sweats back on, hop on the bus and go.
Really?
Yeah, they're pretty gross.
Yeah. I was going to say, I mean, my kids, yeah, they are.
They, I mean, they go in sweats. They usually have their uniforms on underneath them, most of them do. They, they take them off and then they go play and then they put them back on.
We weren't allowed to do that. No, seriously, we weren't allowed to do that. That's why I asked.
Yeah, that's how.
And that's because the coaches didn't want to smell us the whole time.
Well, I just thought it, you know, it's kind of, yeah, a little dangerous with.
They're gross.
Well, yeah, but I'm thinking more along the line of having wet kids go out in the twenty below zero. Well, but, yeah, if that's what they're doing, that's what they're doing.
Does he have any walk to school in short?
Well, I was just thinking after the game though, I mean, I remember how soaked I used to be after the games and just to jump on a cold bus after that and walking from the building up to the bus was just a concern. You answered it.
Elementary basketball hoop, last year, it was broken, there was something wrong with it. Has that been fixed? No, it hasn't.
So we talked about replacing it.
Yeah, that was something that we had talked about putting on the, um, in for the, well, basically scheduling the, uh, trust fund hearing. And I think we were waiting on Mark to give us a little bit more information because there was a couple of different, there was like replacing it sort of like for like, which was fairly cheap. And then there was placing it in the, you know, updated, uh, thing, which was quite a bit more expensive. But I think that whole discussion got their way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think exactly.
They discussed on which at that time.
After holidays.
I will, I will say too, the one more thing I guess is, and this is, this is kind of a cool thing. I've gotten some pretty good feedback and, and I wanted to say thank you all for the support on this and the, the other teachers that helped do this. But, um, the, the weight is pretty much finished up. If you get a chance to go over there in the corner and check things out, I know some teachers have been using it with, uh, with their kids, the P E a little bit, maybe some people go check it out. I know that some of the coaches are starting to use that and doing practices. I've, I've actually found that, you know, when I need to bring some kids who aren't doing so well and they need to burn some energy, you know, I've been able to kind of process with them in there and, and they've been able to lift some weights a little bit and do some physical activity. So, um, it's, it's getting used and, um, I just want to thank everybody for allowing us to, to do this. The kids have gotten some really good feedback on that for me. Really, they appreciate it.
Yeah, the kids, the kids love it. We're in a, for basketball, we're in our third week, um, of using the weight room. We limit, it was the first eight kids that signed up because you're going to have so many kids in the room. But they are incredibly appreciative that the community and the school board, um, and the administration has supported that. And it's, it's really, it's pretty awesome to have.
That's great.
Yeah. Just a couple of things, Mark, I just, middle school is starting on Monday as far as practice. I'm not sure when their games start. And I'm obviously, as a, as a coach, I'm thankful the kids are having a season. I know I wrote everybody a letter after our last meeting about, you know, some of the things I thought. But, you know, whatever we came up with is, is what's best for everybody and I get it. I will just say as far as senior night, um, if there is a way to maybe package our senior nights with another school that would allow fans, so if we went to say Woodville, who I know, I know has a lot of fans, and said, yeah, we'll play you on your senior night if you have limited, you know, fans attendance or just the paths of those seniors. And if they were to reciprocate maybe for ours, um, for our seniors, for our boys and girls. So it's just, just the families of those seniors, um, that might be just something to consider, so.
Now, I think, I think a lot of people were kind of throwing that out there, but they didn't put it in that word. They, they were talking about those middle, just the seniors, families, the seniors. But I like that idea is like, you know, we'll do it for, you know, Woodville, Woodville.
Yeah, well, because I know some teams are saying, we won't play you if you have fans, but, um, you know, if, if we can have an agreement where they reciprocate, it's strictly just the families, um, of those particular players. I think that would be a nice way to do it, um, to have at least something, some quotient to the, I can pass that on.
Good idea. And before we move on, back to the elementary basketball loop. Should we, I know we're looking at, um, scheduling a hearing to use money out of the trust fund to replace a, something in the high school basketball loop. Should we do them both at the same time? Is there money to do that? Can we at least get numbers from, um, my hood to see what the class recovers at the elementary school? Because I know we were talking about doing that.
Yeah, if we can package them both in the same year, now it'd be great.
Yeah, right. We can put them on there and we'll have some votes.
Yeah.
That's what we got last year.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Committee reports. Policy.
So, um, as you see on the, um, schedule for the agenda, there's, uh, several policies that are on for second reading this evening. So I think we should probably take those up as our first. Basically, um, authorized signatures, um, just allows us to, you know, minor alterations to the policies regarding who's allowed to sign for stuff. We went over these all in detail. Uh, I think we made some small, uh, changes as far as some of the verbiage, but nothing, um, real material was changed from last week to this week. So, um, if, if nobody has any additional concerns with those, I would move for, uh, policy D G A, D K, D H A C, I F A, I H A M and I H B I, uh, be approved.
Did you say D H A C?
I said D H A C, yes.
I'll second that. Does anybody have any questions or special?
I have a suggestion. On things that are going to be electronically signed, that we add verbiage. And this is coming from the N H M A for town stuff, we have to do this in town. And the reason of doing so is if for some reason the board can't go to the S E U office due to a shutdown or anything else to sign minutes, um, and manifest, et cetera, that if you add verbiage, then we can electronically sign individually and all eight signature pages can be attached to the one document. It can be called as a single document. Did I say that right?
You're saying allowing us to sign manifests electronically as well?
And minutes or anything else that needs to be signed by the board. And the verbiage is, um, the signers of this document agree that electronic signatures, back signatures, scanned signatures and or copied signatures have the same binding effect as the original signatures. This document can be signed in multiple parts and be considered a single signed document. That, the town has added that at the bottom of the signature. We have a different system for our manifest, but on the signature page, we manifest that at the bottom. And in the minutes, it's at the bottom. I think they're putting it at the bottom of every page of the minutes now. So it has no effect on this policy other than it would, might be a good idea for us to add that to our signature pages.
So the way that would work essentially would be we, there'd be seven different signature pages, all with one signature on it. They'd all be stacked together.
Correct, correct. And it would still count it to be one document.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think that complicates things with, because part of the, the electronic signature policy requires the, the, uh, the administrative office to track in sort of hard copy when electronic signatures are being used. So, uh, similar to, to like what a notary does in their logbook, there's supposed to be a, a hard copy in the office that's being maintained that says, you know, Judy signed electronically for this particular document on this particular day. So that if ever, if, you know, if it ever came up that one of these electronically signed documents could be, was being disputed, or, you know, you could say, yes, we did sign that document, or no, it's not in our logbook, we did not sign that document. And if we were doing that for all five or seven, four, seven, board members, I think that would significantly complicate that aspect of it.
But maybe there's a, do you want to pull it out? I mean, you want, should we remove that so you have some more time to?
Well, I, I would say this, I think we can, we can approve the policy as it's proposed and we can have another discussion of the policy about adding some additional language to allow the board to, we're figuring out a way to, uh, allow the board to, um,
Right.
give this, do the electronic signatures in some form.
It's a little different too, because, I mean, we sign weekly, you know, fifteen times, twenty times sometimes, every single week. So it's a little different with the school board that where every other week, we had even sometimes. And we sign a lot less, other than manifesting, but, um, so it's, we did it because God forbid we have a case at town hall and have to shut town hall down. And we do everything remotely. Then when we do get back in there and assign, it's going to be nine hundred signatures all at the same time.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the reason for doing it. I, I mean, it's not bad to have that backup just in case, but we can all knock a good somewhere and hopefully that never happens.
Well, I mean, I don't know if that's the best policy, just to brand new success, but I think it's a good idea.
Just in case and if it doesn't happen.
I think that for now, it makes sense for us to get the electronic stuff in there because we're using the electronic signatures already. So we need to make sure that we're, we have a policy that's in compliance with what we're doing.
And then add some.
And then we can talk about adding, you know, and maybe put that out for the agenda for the next policy meeting.
Have that printed very, very small if you might.
Because it, I think we should, I think we need to have a policy in place regarding the electronic signatures that we're doing now. And then we can talk about it here in a way that could make sense for us to do it, do that in the future. But I, I think I would still recommend approving the policy as it is now when we could.
I don't disagree. I just, that came up at our meeting the other day and I thought I have to bring it to.
That would be, that makes sense. And if, maybe just carry that forward to the next policy meeting so we don't lose sight of it, you know?
Yeah, just to put, put that particular aspect.
Sounds good. Anybody else? All right, so all in favor of, of approving the policies that specifically signify or stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extentions, that motion carries.
And just real quick, we did have a policy meeting tonight. We went over, um, quite a few policies and remarkably efficiently. So we'll have a, a handful of news up on for first reading next, yeah, December ninth. There's a, there's a handful of modifications. There's a lot regarding school nurse. If you guys will recall, last year, they overhauled the requirements for the nursing and the student health services and all that stuff. And so a lot of it's, um, in regards to that. And then there's some policies that we're going to be removing that are no longer necessary. So that will all be next, next meeting.
Policy committee. We have the facility minutes on my side. Is there any updates on anything from the last paper, anything like that? Professional development event on Monday?
Yes.
Any updates there?
No, they just, they started looking at the, um, actual professional development plan and, um, looking to move forward with revising, getting updated, anything that needs to be updated. At this point in time, they usually get reviewed by the state department of education every five years. Ours was, is completed in twenty twenty. The state has not been doing that. Department of that has not been taking any of the plans or reviewing them. So we're just going to move forward, update what we need to, you know, update, look to see if any of the standards change. But they haven't right now. We're just, we're at the beginning stages of, of looking at that.
Any other committees?
Risk management met Monday, kind of just to get back into the group meeting because we were, you know, maybe we met once last year before the shutdown. So we've got a couple of meetings or like this one even scheduled for next month. They didn't do any site visits or anything, they just kind of regrouped.
Budget committee, well. The first budget committee meeting, uh, most of the budget committee was not able to attend the meeting. Only one person was able to attend. So we just handed out information and that was that. The technology committee, when they met, did they do minutes for that? The last time the technology met, I wasn't able to be there. I just wonder if they did.
Did they, I think that meeting was, was, did that?
It did happen. I don't know, I don't have.
I can get those.
They probably did, they're good at taking notes generally, but.
If there's anything else like the.
Committee's happy to take minutes. I'll get those. How many budget committees are there? Is there still only three plus year, four?
Yes. Don't do it, um.
No, I know. No, I'm going to say no, wait, no. Um, at the budget committee, we did go over the nineteen twenty fiscal, uh, end of year report. As the, with the information the board received, we presented to the budget committee. We also went over the budget, current budget year with the CARES Act monies and the, um, you know, the other monies that we will be getting. And then the twenty twenty one budget.
Okay, staff nominations, recommendations and resignations.
Yes, I do, I just want to go over your, your coaches.
Okay.
And, uh, some of them have already been mentioned in, in previous meetings, but I just, I'll just put them all, all together now. Currently, like Mark said, the middle school basketball season, uh, is starting prior to the high school basketball season. So the reason why I say that is because you have, you have some coaches working with both, um, levels. So you'll hear their names. Uh, the middle school girls head coach is Brianna Fairbrother. Middle school girls assistant coach is Ryan Fairbrother. Middle school boys head coach is Max Dovolak. Middle school boys assistant coach is Matt Manning and Mandy Avery. High school girls head coach is Dana Gagnon. High school girls assistant coach is Brianna Fairbrother. High school boys head coach is Matt Manning. High school boys assistant coach is Vance Pickler. For the ski team.
Was that Dana Gagnon? I was, oh, that's fantastic.
The middle, for the ski team, your middle school head coach is Marcus Corey. Your high school head coach is Aaron Love. And ski team assistant coaches are Kim Pinkham, Jeff Clermont and Keegan Rice.
Nice.
I have the list, so that will be included in your minutes. I also have a recommendation for a Robert Soccher, S O C H O R, for the distance learning facilitator.
Where's Robert from?
Robert is from.
You want me to tell you a little about Robert? He's from Lisbon right now. He's, he's lived kind of up there for a while. He is, um, he's an Air Force veteran where he is, um, he was responsible for some, from training coordinators from the Air Force, um, for, for like seven years. He has got a degree in, um, criminal justice, but he's like one class away from his master's in elementary education. He's self-employed as well. He owns a property management and development company. He has been, uh, a sixth grade math, E L A teacher, paraprofessional, and worked with kindergarten. We just thought that when we, we looked at, when we were interviewing him, we had, uh, four other candidates that we had and we had them in for interviews. The thing about Robert was he, with his conversation and the background check and, and the references and stuff, just connected with, with kids who were like that middle level that we have the majority of our kids who are, who are out. He, he connected with that K through six middle level and, and he also connected with kids who are struggling learners. And so when we look at some of the kids who are not coming to our school, um, right now, remote learning, a lot of them are struggling learners, whether it's with an I P or they just, um, don't, don't enjoy school so much or they don't have the sports at home and they're struggling right now. And so we felt like he would be a really good fit with them. He's really good with, um, according to his references, very organized, very well prepared as far as lessons go. We thought that with his organization and teaching skills, that it would be a really nice fit because the facility is going to be doing a lot of communication back and forth in the home with the teachers, with the administration. Plus, he's going to have to have some time set within his schedule to actually do lessons with kids at multiple levels. So I'm, I'm excited he will, pending approval, he will be starting on Friday. He'll get fully acquainted with, um, all of our online platforms for a couple of days, reaching out to. out to teachers, I'm sorry, yeah, reaching out to teachers, reaching out to parents and kids to set up some meets with them and scheduling them. Once, once we get approval, I'll mail out a letter home explaining this to all the parents. It's already, it's already written, I'm just waiting for that. And by the time he starts actually working with people, it'll probably be right after Thanksgiving. But it's going to take a, a moment for him to understand how this works, how to help develop it.
Sure.
And what's kind of expected from him, and who the players are and things like that. So we're excited about that.
Sounds promising.
Yeah.
That position is a distance learning coordinator?
Facilitator.
We've been calling it facilitator, yeah.
Is that full-time? Is that a full-time position or?
No, not at this time. It's five hours a day, five days a week.
Do you like the motion?
Sure.
I'll make the motion, we approve Robert Soccher for the distance learning facilitator position.
Thank you for the second, Joe. Anybody else have any more questions? All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, and that motion carries. Any other recommendations or is that it?
No, that's it.
New business, there's, there's anything there? Continuing business, looks, well, I guess we could probably knock some of these off. Down winter sports, student assessments, COVID-19 update, unless anybody has any COVID questions. And you said, typing project, H-bash. Are we still on schedule to have the, is it December? We've got a date for that, for the
For the, for the air
Uh, yeah, somebody to come in, yes.
Okay.
And I've been, well, I have communicated with Bob Bishop from the
Oh, okay.
From the state, but he has not communicated that. So I'm still waiting. Can I just go back to your board action?
Sure.
We have a school district clerk.
Okay.
And that will be Sharon Holt.
Can you tell us a little bit about her?
She's great at what she does.
She is.
Yeah, so Sharon will be the
Do you need a motion for that or is she disappointed?
You guys appointed her.
Appointed. We're officially appointed, that's an appointed position.
So I'll make a motion, we appoint Sharon Holt for the school district clerk.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you for the second, Joe. Any more questions? All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, and that motion carries. Also on continuing business is right-of-way.
Right, there is a letter in here, Pamela, from the attorney, I have not heard anything further from that.
So basically, what is, what we're going to do is we're going to put this back on the warrant
Yes.
And get it, go through all the proper channels to get it, the right-of-way cleaned up and recorded properly. And then at that point, from what I understand from reading it, Ms. Harrodine then can go to the town?
Yes.
To see, so she doesn't
Yes, if I could just
She doesn't need to do a warrant article with us?
She does. This says that she needs to go to the town first to get approval for this.
She needs written approval from the town to bring it to the school board, to the school board to put it on the warrant.
Right. So basically, she needs to do quite a bit.
So we have to, we have to clean it up, she then goes to the town?
We could do them both this year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, if the town's going to say, no, we're not going to allow her to have a
Right.
A driveway permit over a right-of-way, then there's no point, that is what he's saying, there's no point, unless she basically, their, their right-of-way doesn't technically exist right now, that she gets, she also gets a right-of-way, and then the right-of-way that we give the town is adjusted by whatever the right-of-way that we've given her. So it's sort of a weird process.
But our, the only required action from this board right now is to make sure that we put it on the warrant to clean up.
The town's right-of-way.
Yes, the town's right-of-way.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Unless the intent is, which is sort of what was one of the last parts is, unless the intent is for us to say, you know, give her the opportunity to try to get the town to, to get her right-of-way, and then we would also, we would be changing what we're giving the town to accommodate her right-of-way. Because technically, the town doesn't have a right-of-way right now. But I, and
What they do have is only for emergency use technically, right?
Well, it's not, it's not
It doesn't exist right now.
No, no, I realize that, but
Yeah.
I mean, that's what What is going to be written?
How was the intent?
Yes. The other thing was, I, maybe, Tammy, you have more insight on this, but it mentions something about a little side quote, a little side comment from the minutes of the select board meeting.
Oh, you know, I, I caught that, and I printed all the minutes from the very first one that Denise Harrodine came in to ask the town for the driveway permit. So I done with the one that I think he's talking about, that, that side comment was, it was clearly not something the board or you have ever said anyone wants to reneg on. So that little side comment from the minutes of the select board's meeting should be addressed. Well, it does it. It was the October fifth meeting, and our town, the Lincoln Town Manager was saying that he noted he has expressed some concern to the superintendent, began to convey to the school board that the town has spent a lot of money over the years extending a lot of lines, paving the turnaround, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So for those of you that know Butch, he's a kind of a nervous Nellie. And then in response to that, Chairman Robertson commented he sees two issues. The town and the school district were of the belief that there has always been a signed agreement or an easement for this turnaround. Therefore, Robertson did not think the school would now reneg on this agreement. And number two, this issue, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
It wasn't that he said they might, it was kind of clear enough to Butch, who's a nervous Nellie, oh gosh, we spent all this money, are they going to say no? And Butch is, and OJ was like, yeah, no. That's not the intent here. I think that our attorney just kind of read a little more into it than he really needed to, so
I do need to have a
And here, I have all the minutes to, if anybody wants to read them.
Oh, okay. Those are my, my other question about this, but I think it seems like, for our purposes, we should just maintain what we had agreed to to begin with, with the board, and I don't think any of us on the board is tied with that. The board had agreed to begin with, put that on the warrant, for the people, and then, Ms. Harrodine, we'll have to deal with the town.
It's kind of embarrassing thing for both the school and the town that the boards, and the town manager back then, and the school board, and the superintendent that was back then, dropped the ball. And now we just have to kind of pick it up and clean it up and get the job done, seriously.
So what you're saying, Jake, is going with that, third paragraph?
Yeah, basically, I mean, that would be my suggestion.
And just leave it at that, and then we stop.
Right.
Can we also communicate to Ms. Harrodine though that she needs to have written approval? Or, or written statement from the town of Lincoln saying that the town of Lincoln will give her a driveway permit off of their easement, once they have it? So that she can also go forward, if she gets Lincoln's written approval. But yes, if this all passes a district meeting, we'll give her the driveway permit. Then we can put hers on this year's warrant also, if that's what we choose to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and, and maybe what it makes sense to do is to say that it's, it's the intent of the board to proceed with the original agreement with the town, and just finalize the original agreement with the town, advise her that, you know, for that original agreement, she's going to have to, she would have to get approval from the town in order to get an easement over their easement, in order to put her driveway in. And if she can't get that, then there's little point in asking the town for the, for that addition.
Right. So she needs to get written
Do we have to change our wording?
I don't think so.
Well, it, it says for emergency use only, that would nullify her driveway, that's not emergency use only.
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, that's what
Yeah, but I mean, that's only if we decide back now that there's another one, it could be a second thing, right?
Well, I don't think there's any way to access what she needs to access without using the property that's already sort of
She can access it from the front of the property unless it's
No, no, I mean, with an E. We'd be going over the easement that's already
Gotcha, yeah.
I mean, I think that's the point of the, you know, that was the last paragraph where it says essentially, you know, you could potentially change the language
That's what I'm saying.
In order to accommodate that. But I think it, he mentions that it's the town's position that it's only emergent for the sole purpose of allowing emergency use.
Judith is waiting, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Matt, I just wanted to say that on the, on the minutes, one of the, the October twenty-six minutes for the town, it's, OJ asked of Denise, I'm going to read it, asked if Denise Harrodine has, has been contacted about the driveway issue that she was inquiring about, which she has, because I've been in communication with her. Uh, Burbank responded that he has discussed this matter with DPW Director Halloway, who has no issue with the driveway coming out into the Hammerhead, as long as it does not come out into the head of the turnaround. Robertson clarified that this must go through the easement process, then before the school board, and ultimately, it will be the town's decision.
I don't know. And what do we need to do? I mean, we've talked about that, three or four meetings, and I feel like we're just like spinning our feet.
Right.
What does this board require you to do to clean this up?
Put the warrant, we have to put the warrant article out there.
Okay.
Because that warrant article is from two thousand and seven.
Right. So we need, we need to get that
We're going to get that cleared.
Go through the, the process of getting that done properly and, and recorded.
Right.
That's what we need to do.
That's what we're doing.
And in the meantime, if Ms. Harrodine chooses to, she can go to the town and say, hey, you know, can I get a letter stating that you do intend to give me yada, yada, yada? And if that's correct, then she can put a warrant article, if we're, want, want that to happen, she can put a, a warrant article after the warrant article to get this deed cleaned up, so that she can then at the same time get approval to do this, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so can we do that?
No. We need to talk about it a few more times.
I mean, is anybody opposed to letting?
If the town agrees to allow her to do it off of their easement, then why would we oppose that?
Right, so can we just, can we just move forward and say this is what we do?
Right.
If they change their language.
It has to, too, if you look at the bottom paragraph on the first page of what Gordon sent, you would need another vote to allow the board to convey easement to the butter, to allow her to construct a driveway across the district's land. So this board would need two votes at the district meeting, one for the towns that were rectifying from back then, and one for Denise Harrodine.
Right.
Once she has the town permission to do so, then we can put it on that. Put it on the district's warrant, you know, the town's, and then the next one can be hers.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So can we just, somebody needs to get in touch with Ms. Harrodine and let her know what she needs to get the town's written permission to bring to the school board, so that we can put it on the warrant to get it done in March.
And, and, in any event, we are going to put on the one for the town, no matter what.
That's a passive.
Right.
Yeah. I think we've got it.
Wow, that's clear as mud.
Till next week.
I've never felt better about this. I thought we had cleared it last week, and then we got another letter.
Oh, yeah. Don't let the lawyers, send me the lawyers.
Okay.
And I'm going to share, because it's, everyone in public, it's public record, I'm going to share this letter from our lawyer with this select board, so that they can see that yes, it's clear as mud.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Always a pleasure. Um, there is, no one needs to report. They're all just, yeah, doing their thing. Thank you for having me.
Community. Everybody? Paul?
Uh, yeah. I, I just wanted to clarify for the N W E A, I know that the, the first grades is going to get, get some testing in, a little later, at least by the end of November, I guess. So that means that the second, third, and fourth grade are done, right? Okay, so we can evaluate those, but I haven't seen the grades, but we know that they went down, right, due to COVID. So all that testing went down. And when in January, when we get those tests back, all those tests are also going to be down as well, due to COVID. So we already know all the testing is going to be negative. All right? So again, you know, what is, what is the testing for? And how are we going to adjust and improve the testing? Because we know it's going to be going down. And we just said, we have ten million dollars to apply for grants, for COVID-related things. So why can't we apply for a grant to bring in demonstrated success or less, to come in, evaluate where we're at, and how to get our kids back up speed for lost time that we lost due to COVID? And I've written requests for proposals, I've looked at request proposals, if you want me to draft something, and you guys look at my draft and approve that, I'd be more than willing to do that.
Well, I appreciate that, I just don't know that that's, that's something that anybody here is looking to do right now. I don't know if there's been, other than the presentation you've had and discussions we've had, we, you know, we typically wait and we review our testing, and I don't know if there's anything else to add for the board, unless anybody on the board has anything they want to add.
I guess my, yeah, I mean, so, can we do that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not making that decision. You know, I don't, I don't know that, I, I thought the last time we were pretty clear that we're going to wait in here and see what, what comes up next. Your concerns may not be the same as everybody else's concerns, I don't, I don't know, I don't think anybody's pressing to move forward to, to do that right now.
Not at this time, only because we, we already have a lot on the plate for the students right now in getting acclimated to, you know, being back in school and, and working. We are moving forward, we have put a lot of different things in place since the beginning of the year, and we'd like to see if that, if that's working and to see how the students are doing. They need time to adjust. We will be recording in January, when we record in January, we typically have recommendations that we're going to move, you know, to the board that we would be moving forward with, and, in order to respond to the areas of concern.
So I guess, just a follow-up question to that based on Paul's question, I mean, I think it's safe to assume that due to everything that we've gone through, test scores are probably going to be lower. I mean, we can all assume that, for one reason or another. The, the question is, is a program that was presented, is that something that we would even be interested in down the road? Is it something that there's an appetite for? Or, or is this something that we think that we can work on internally and, and try some other programs, other things that have been done, I know?
Right, what, what we will do is look, we will do an analysis of the data, we will also do an analysis of the programs in the curriculum that we have in place, correlate it with the standards, and make sure everything correlates, and then move forward with, with whatever, what program would be out there in, in determining what more needs to be done with the students based on their current skills and scores. So this program may work, we'll look at that. We're going, we will look at that when we look at all the data, and we determine what we've already put in place this year, and measure what information or components have been in place, and measure that with what the student scores are.
I mean, I know it's not moving as quickly as you want it to move, and I know it may not move in the direction you want it to move. But I don't want you to think that it's completely been discounted, obviously. But there, there's probably some philosophical differences. I know I have a, a philosophical difference with standardized testing with young kids than you probably should, probably have.
Well, I mean, it's a DOE-approved program. And this school has been in that program before, and we had fantastic success, we became a blue ribbon school. We all know that we have bad test scores on the primary level, and they aren't where they should be. The principal himself, in a meeting here, was suggesting that we do more time on, on the core, you can say it better than I can, on math and reading, and bring up those scores. And that is a program that he was set, that he wanted to. So there's acknowledgement that we're not doing as well as we need to be doing. So there's acknowledgement that we're not doing as well as we need to be doing. We're ranked 191 out of 232 schools.
I, we've heard it, I've heard it from, you know, I'm not trying to be rude to disrespect.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just, I just don't, you know, we know the test scores are going to go down, you know, in January. We lost a lot of time already and we're going to be graduating kids, you know, and, and we aren't catching up from the COVID. You know, kids aren't reading, literally, because of the COVID. They aren't reading where they should be at. So I would like to do something, I think we have an opportunity here, it's $10 million. Let's apply for something and do something, you know? This is the plan, I mean, it is a plan, it's better than no plan and it's DOE-approved.
I, I'm personally not going to make that directive. I mean, I don't, I don't know if anybody else wants to do that at this time, but I, I'm not interested in personally doing that. I, I just think I have a philosophical difference with the importance of standardized test scores in, in children at that age compared to as they get older.
Well, it doesn't even matter about the standardized test scores. The kids can't read at the level they're supposed to be reading at in the primary school because of COVID, period. How are we going to make up that difference?
I don't, I don't know, I, I mean, I'm not interested in continuing the conversation. We heard, we, we gave you time, I don't, I don't want to do this every, every week.
Well, you will, I mean, I have my 15 minutes.
We can do the three minutes. I mean, it's, it's not something that's going to come from me unless somebody here is going to do something, I don't.
Yeah, we will be looking into different, you know, a variety of, of different supports that are, that may be available and programming that may be available. And we will look at the monies that, that have been presented and what we can use those monies for. Not as, as clear as we're stating to you, the, the, the choices of how you use that money is very complex. So we will be looking at all options for all the students and where they are academically.
Thank you. My intent is not to be disrespectful to you, I just, I mean, it's, we're having the same conversation and I don't know that the board's going to move in any direction as quickly as you want them to do that. So I think that's where we stand right now.
Right, and I guess we'll talk about it in two weeks? Okay?
Anybody else?
Oh, I would say, I mean, Maggie, just thank you for the practice remote days, it really helped. Bringing my son to work and trying to juggle it all, but we figured it out and it was nice to have that practice day, just in case, yeah. Good thanks to the teachers. Do you want anything to add, Rebecca?
We do not.
Motion for adjournment.
Girl's second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, and that motion carries. Thank you, everybody.